Have any issue with the Circle K liquor license transfer?
Uh, no, that could that just goes from one side of the street to the other. So I got no reservation.
Am I still street and sidewalk? Cause I didn't look at the list yet. Steve.
Yes, you are. Yes, you are, Don.
Okay, so it's fine with me.
I'm trying to think who or for this.
Uh, Zach is, I think.
Okay. You okay with that, Zach?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
Yep.
It looks wonderful. Very nice.
Yeah.
And nice fence around that detention pond.
Well, you know, one thing I noticed on the outside, on the side outside, non ethanol gasoline. I'm excited about that.
But it they're not operating yet, correct? Cause there's no gas prices up yet.
No.
No, they did the final inspection about ten days to two weeks ago with the fire department, but they still have other things to go through on there and uh, before they opened, but they said they're very close.
When do they plan to open, Mayor?
They didn't give us a hard date. Um, I'm based off of secondhand information from uh, from Rob, I'm gonna guess late February, early March.
Are they gonna close the one down the street?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, it's uh, it's six forty-five. I'm going to call the uh, committee of the whole meeting for Tiffin City Council Monday, uh, February twenty-first uh, twenty twenty-one to order. Does anyone have anything for the uh, committee of the hall? Mayor?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, I do have a couple of suspensions uh, that we're requesting this evening. The first is ordinance twenty-one dash nine. Um, that uh, the reason for suspension is because that ordinance is a grant from NOPAC. Uh, that council's already aware of it. Um, it is uh, it was put in the budget, but we still have to, now that we're into the new year and the application period is open, we still have to have a an ordinance pass authorizing it. Um, so because we would like to uh, get moving with these projects, I know uh, um, city administrators working on the quotes for the placement that's necessary with this. Um, we'd like to move through quicker sooner than later if possible. Uh, and then the other one was ordinance twenty-one dash eleven. Um, and and Kathy, I'll I'll let you on standby in case uh, you're needed for any clarification, but to my understanding, um, if the reason for ordinance twenty-one dash eleven is literally just because of a computer glitch, uh, when Kathy ran the budget, uh, it rounded off a couple of budget lines. Um, so you know, she's not legally allowed to do that, and it's literally to fix a few cents here, a few cents there where it rounded lines off. Uh, so we need to pass an ordinance to correct uh, what the computer glitched. Um, she's working with SSI, our software company, and they're going to assist her to make sure that that doesn't happen in the future. Um, but we still need all of you to pass uh, an ordinance clarifying that. And then the only thing that I really, I guess, had more so to question for was Brent, was if he thought uh, ordinance twenty-one dash ten needed suspended. I do know uh, the engineer's office is planning to move forward as quickly as possible with that project. I just didn't know Brent, if you have any indication on if that is needed quickly or if that can wait a bit.
Yes, um, I I can speak to uh, ordinance twenty-one dash ten. What this ordinance does is that it allows the city to obtain an easement for the the roadwork that uh, we will be doing and sidewalk work um, in advance of the um, railroad crossing on the east side of of Tiffin. It's on East Perry Street and East Market Street. And this is part of the railroad safety project. You may recall about a year ago, you authorized the mayor to obtain by deed where we would actually own um, additional portions of property on the north and south side of East Market and East Perry Street owned by um, Heidelberg. This in particular is the university hall property and then on the north side around the octagon property. And um, um, the the actual work for widening that area is was not scheduled until this calendar year. After evaluating this, um, we believe it would be better for both Heidelberg and for the city to own to not own the property, but actually just obtain an easement, um, exclusive permanent easement for the little sliver of property on each side of uh, Market and Perry Street. You may know and recall that we have done this before when we need to take just a small portion of um, of right away and use it for public use. Um, instead of replating or you know, chain altering the actual street as platted, we obtained additional um, um, property for public use. Example is Dr. Dornhour's property out on the west side of uh, of Tiffin. You may know that we widened that turn uh, to have trucks and vehicles avoid getting into the the grassy area there, and we just obtained an easement for that little strip. I think we did also uh, um, closer to Westgate, we did that two years ago. Shawne Avenue up on the north side, Eagle Rock Business Park, we did the same thing. Um, at the 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 cul-de-sac turnaround at uh, South River Road, we obtained easement rights. We feel it's better in this situation to do that versus a deed. So that gives you an explanation of why this is being presented. Um, the timing of it is that we would like to move forward and actually use the property probably as soon as uh, March or April, as we're moving forward to get the project going. So um, it doesn't necessarily have to be done tonight suspended, but uh, it would be nice. I mean, we understand the project you've already approved, uh, you know, what was before an ordinance to to uh, take a deed. So it's just a little different type of of property interest that we're taking. But at the latest, I would ask that you, um, after the second reading in a couple of weeks, you could suspend the uh, the the final third reading and pass it. It is an emergency, so it will go into effect immediately so that Matt can proceed with the um, with the construction of the project. Are there any questions about ordinance uh, twenty dash ten, twenty-one dash ten? If not, Mr. President, I I have a couple of other procedural items.
Go ahead.
Ordinance twenty dash one thirty-one. That ordinance is for the zoning of uh, of five plus acres out on the east side of Tiffin. Uh, we've talked about this at a prior meeting. In your uh, packet, you um, should have, or in your email from um, the clerk of council, you should have received the new exhibit A, which is uh, the uh, the actual description of the area that needs to be zoned. So under motions, if you could, um, Bridget, uh, move to amend ordinance twenty dash one thirty-one by substituting uh, the new exhibit A, which has the complete description of the five point three five two acres um, and and replace the 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 um, the exhibit A that uh, was a part of the ordinance as as it was introduced. So that's under motions. And then um, also under motions, I would suggest that you remove from the table ordinance twenty dash one thirty-seven, which is an ordinance that uh, involves uh, cleaning up some of the zoning uh, code. Uh, this was presented to a joint public hearing at the planning commission, and they have uh, um, in your packet, they have a written recommendation uh, back to you. So now it'd be appropriate for you to take that off the table so it could be read at tonight's meeting for the second time.
Yeah. Ben, did you sign uh, ordinance twenty-one nine and twenty-one eleven?
Uh, yes, I did, Mr. President. I'd be happy to move to suspend the three reading.
Very good. Thank you. Is there anything else?
Mr. President, Councilman Gillig has his hand up.
I'm sorry. Councilman Gillig.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Little trivia for everybody. Uh, this is a mystery friend and neighbor. Let's see if you can name them. They graduated from the class of two thousand at Tiffin Columbian with me. They're a longtime veteran of the restaurant business in Northwest Ohio and was a football teammate of mine before switching to become the first male cheerleader in the fifty-two-year history of Tiffin Columbian and also known for legendary family Halloween costumes. Can anyone name this mystery person? Councilman Foe or President Foe?
I have a question. Is he with us this evening?
He just might be.
Yes, I think he is. Uh, Zachary Perkins would be my guest.
Yes. And uh,
I had heard that at trivia night and I still couldn't come up with it, so.
Kind of a trailblazer. Um, we've had um, several young men that have joined the uh, cheerleading squad that do just an incredible job. Uh, there is a seventh grader now that might be the most amazing athlete I've ever seen in person. Uh, he just defies gravity, but uh, Zach was the first in the fifty-two years, and I'm very delighted to see a classmate and a longtime friend of mine. Along with Danny's mustache.
Did you see what it was, Ben?
You should have kept it.
Councilman Leopard.
Oh, I have one for you. Andy of Mayberry. What's the what's the difference in his uniform between his badge and the patch on his shoulder?
Say it again.
Andy of Mayberry, Sheriff Taylor.
Yeah.
What's the difference between the patch on his shoulder and his badge?
That's on shores, Ben.
Patch on his shoulder only has five points. His badge has six.
Huh.
Betsy Ross was instructed by the president to create the flag with a six-pointed star, and she refused to. So it takes way too much time to do it.
Councilman Perry.
I was just curious, um, where we left off on ordinance. And were we looking to suspend that tonight or wait till the second reading or?
I think uh, which one? No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Dan. Which one did you talk with?
I I twenty-one dash ten that with the easement. Um, I mean, personally, I don't see any uh, reason to uh, read it twice. It seems like a no-brainer to me, but I mean, I'm I'm open to whatever the group wants.
Uh, that's up to the council. Doesn't seem to be any hurry in it, but we can suspend it tonight. Councilman Jones.
Yes, I I have no problem suspending twenty-one nine, twenty-one ten, twenty-one eleven, as long as someone explains to the public why we're suspending the, cause these are all first readings and I just doesn't sit well with me when we bring something up tonight and pass it and there's no chance for input. So as long as it's explained properly, I have no problem.
Did you sign? Uh, Bridget, did you sign twenty-one eleven or twenty-one ten?
I did.
Who did?
I was gonna say.
Oh, Steve. Okay, I'm sorry. Are you okay with that, Steve?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Oh, Ca- uh, Councilman Gillig.
Just super fast, you did mention uh, Councilman Leopard mentioned flags. Did you know the American flag briefly went to fifteen stripes after the addition of Vermont and Kentucky, and then it was decided to retain the original thirteen for the thirteen original colonies and thirteen first states and add stars with the addition of each state.
No, never knew that.
Oh, we sure have a lot of stripes if they would, it wouldn't have changed.
All right, we resorted to pinstripes.
Okay, does anyone else have anything else for the uh, committee of the hall? All right, seeing uh, seeing no, no hands go up, uh, I'll adjourn the uh, committee of the whole meeting. Thank you. All right, it's now seven o'clock. I'll call the uh, monthly meeting of the Tiffin City Council uh, February first, twenty twenty-one to order uh, this evening will be led uh, in the pledge of allegiance and invocation by Councilman Perry. Councilman Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you guys would all join me in the large prayer. Our Father, Father of heaven, hallowed thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as in heaven. Give us to stay our dead brethren and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing
All right, before uh, our council clerk, Ann Forrest, reads the call, I'd like to welcome our newest member, Zach Perkins, to uh, the city council. Congratulations on your appointment. Uh, we look forward to working with you. Uh, we expect big things out of you. So having said that, um, clerk of council, Ann Forrest, would you please read the call, uh, roll call, please?
Yes. Um, Councilman Perry.
Here.
Councilwoman Boyle.
Here.
Councilman Gillig.
Here.
Councilwoman Yanatuna.
Here.
Councilman Jones.
Present.
Councilman Leopard.
Here.
And Councilman Perkins.
Here.
Let the record show that we have six members here and one present. Um, everyone have an opportunity to uh, go through the minutes. Are there any additions, deletions, uh, corrections? Hearing none without objection, the meetings will stand approved as presented. Committee reports. Finance committee, Councilman Gillig.
No report this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you. Law community planning, Councilwoman Boyle.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Materials and equipment, Councilman Jones.
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Personnel and labor relations, Councilman Perry.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Recreation of public property, Councilman Perkins.
No report at this time.
Thank you. Street sidewalks and sewers, Councilman Leopard.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Economic development and downtown planning, Councilwoman Yanatuno.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Does anyone see a need for a committee of the whole meeting? Okay, uh, we'll move on to reports of the officers. His honor, Mayor Aaron Demonts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I am going to try to keep things as short as possible with my reports, as you all know. Uh, Matt Watson will be here to uh, provide the annual update from the city engineer's office, and I'd like to leave him with as much time as possible, so I'm going to try to fly through this. Um, it's been a very busy start to the year in January for us here at city hall. Um, just to kind of give council a little bit of flavor of what will be coming up, we are working on a couple separate, very large annexations of additional land into the city uh, as well as a couple housing development projects. Um, and as we've talked with David Zach uh, just this morning, and you'll all hear it uh, the next council meeting when the TSEP team provides their update, there are more than a hundred and fifty projects now in the pipeline that they're working on uh, in cooperation with the city. So all very strong, uh, very good news uh, as we start off. Uh, January, um, what a month. Uh, financially, it was the best January in the city's history as far as revenue goes. Um, we do not have the very end of the month uh, information yet, but at least the numbers through the twenty-eighth of January uh, show almost one point zero four zero million dollars in collections. Um, that is the most that we have ever collected in a January in the city's history. However, that is more money than we collected in any single month in all of last year. So January has started off extremely positive. We're hoping to see that continue. Uh, if revenue remains strong, it's a very positive sign as we continue to head later into the year. And remember, those numbers are actually up against last year's record-setting first quarter, and the fact that we are able to eclipse last year's January total by over two hundred thousand dollars of additional revenue points to a very strong local economy right now. Um, coronavirus update very quickly. Uh, we now have inched up above eight percent of all Seneca County residents have had coronavirus since the beginning. Currently, there are only two hundred and fifty active cases with thirty-nine hospitalizations. Unfortunately, we have increased now to one hundred and eighteen deaths. However, three thousand eight hundred and fifty-two people have recovered. Certainly, hospitalizations are down. We all know the curfew has been extended to eleven P M. We're very hopeful that in a few weeks, we'll be able to have the curfew extended till midnight from the governor's office uh, because it really, our bars and restaurants are really struggling and need that curfew extended if they're going to continue to survive. Uh, the COVID or the COVID nineteen testing site that was uh, a couple of days after our last council meeting, approximately one hundred and fifty individuals were tested at that drive-through site, and the positivity rate was only seven percent. According to the National Guard, they expect that positivity rate to be more like fifteen to eighteen percent at these testing sites, and the fact that ours was only seven percent points to a good sign and backs up the data that cases are down in Seneca County right now. I want to thank Brandon Burner and his entire team at the street department uh, for the job well done with snow removal. Uh, if you're not involved with city government or a plow driver to understand what they face with this snowstorm, it's very different. You know, a lot of the snowstorms come through seven, eight o'clock at night, it starts snowing. You wake up the next morning and the snow's ready to shut off, and you wake up to six or eight inches of snow. The problem with this storm has been that it just never seemed to stop. It was a slow, steady snowfall that just continued, and it still continues right now outside the window, and it just continues to accumulate. Uh, obviously, our drivers cannot drive plows for forty-eight hours straight to keep up with things, so I'm so Brandon and his team prioritize the main routes through town. Uh, I think they've done a tremendous job trying to keep the main routes and the streets that lead to the hospital and safety forces as clear as possible. Uh, and now they're doing the best they can to get into a lot of those residential streets. You have to keep in mind, we have somewhere around ninety miles of roadway in the city of Tiffin. Uh, that's according to the engineer's office, and you guys have heard in the previous year updates when Matt talks about the eighty-nine miles of streets that we have within the city. That doesn't take into account the alleyways that are plowed by public works such as the commercial and industrial alleys and other items. And one thing that I learned as I've ridden with plow drivers in the past, I I can always remember with Parky and the first time I ever rode, who's now retired, but rode in the the uh, plow truck with him, you don't realize how many times you have to make a pass down a street before you actually have a couple of lanes of traffic cleared for vehicles. So it takes them an exorbitant amount of time, and the fact that this storm system has now been snowing for more than forty-eight hours has really put them behind the eight ball, but they've done a tremendous job at trying to keep our roads open here in the community. Uh, also, while we do not own the water company, an alert was sent out by the local water company, Aqua Ohio, and that was regarding bills. They're still continuing to have issues with the United States Post Office as far as bills arriving late and really everything in the mail. Uh, me, like probably a lot of you, have continued to uh, have things show up late, whether it's Kohl's coupons or whether it's uh, um, uh, bills from Aqua or other things, they're all showing up late. Uh, I know I just received a couple of Christmas cards only last week in the mail. And because of that, Aqua bills have been extremely far behind, so Aqua has waived late fees. If anyone does have issues with it, please call. We've had the information on our website. And anyone who has signed up with Aqua Alerts will receive those and those pieces of information here either via their email, a text message, or a voicemail on their cell phones. However, like I mentioned, Aqua is waiving those late fees. It kind of happened late this afternoon, and I'm still trying to digest all of the information. However, Governor Dewine today unveiled the state uh, uh, budget, and there's a lot of inform- interesting information in it. They are spending about one billion dollars of one-time money in the state of Ohio, some of that from the rainy day fund, others money that they've received from the federal government. But one billion dollars is being spent to help businesses, cities, counties, townships recover from the COVID nineteen pandemic and the hit that they've taken to their budgets. Of that, two hundred million dollars is being set aside for infrastructure projects. Uh, that could be anything from bridges to roadways that may lead to job creation and other projects within communities. So the city, as soon as we have that information available and what specifically we can use it for, you better believe we'll be applying. Another two hundred and fifty million dollars of that budget is being set aside for broadband and Wi-Fi access expansion throughout the state of Ohio. Again, the plan is for that two hundred and fifty million dollars, many of that to be used in different grants that communities and organizations can apply for to increase the accessibility to broadband and Wi-Fi in their communities. So far, the downtown Wi-Fi has been a big hit and has been used pretty heavily by residents and visitors alike. One of the items that I would like to see us pursue is the possibility of having some other Wi-Fi hotspots here in the community. Just this morning, we started a conversation about the possibility of being able to incorporate that at Hedges Boyer Park. This grant may be a lot, may allow us to be able to do that sort of thing at Hedges or other heavily utilized areas in the city where it could be a benefit to the entire community having Wi-Fi accessibility. Uh, Kevin Hughes let me know this morning that the nearly fourteen million dollar upgrade at the wastewater pollution control center is nearly finished. They're expecting to have it wrapped up by the end of February, at least all the hard construction work. There'll be a lot of programming and smaller tweaks that will be ongoing into the spring, but the vast majority of that project will be wrapped up here by the end of the month. Good news to report is we're expecting it to come in about eight hundred thousand dollars under budget, which that of course will only help our sewer fund and lead us towards the effort of keeping sewer bills as affordable as possible in the community. I do want to give council a head up, heads up that a traffic study was recently completed at several of our traffic signals, and four of them are recommended for removal because they do not meet signal warrants and actually may lead to an increase in accidents having a light at that area than if it was either a four-way stop or a two-way stop. So the Traffic Safety Commission has been discussing the study, and in the very near future, there will be an official report sent to city council for recommendation that at this time appears will be recommending the removal of four different traffic signals within the community. I want to congratulate Jamie Fadley at Jam's Monthly Markets on her ribbon cutting on Madison Street. Uh, pretty neat store if you've not been in there. Uh, I didn't realize how large that building was, but she has two different floors of all kinds of really neat Ohio merchandise, clothing, food, uh, you name it, she seems to have that. So it's in the building located right across Madison Street from Calver High School. Congratulations, Jamie, on your new business. And then just today, it was announced that Alex Pardee, a young professional, is moving back to Tiffin and opening Lox by Cactus Hair Salon located at thirty-three Court Street. Congratulations, Alex, on your new business. A couple of other exciting items, but I'm going to let city engineer Matt Watson tell you about them. Uh, I'm going to bring him in now for his report. But we had a couple of projects bid at the end of last week that uh, I don't want to steal Matt's thunder because I'm sure he's probably grinning ear to ear to tell you about the outcome of how those bids came in. Uh, and I want to give him the opportunity to uh, share the wonderful news with you. So um, we do have Matt Watson, head city engineer, coming in. Uh, he's going to give his annual report this evening. And then so you can all start thinking about questions and comments you may have next week, or excuse me, next meeting on the sixteenth will be the uh, will be the uh T-Sep update from David Zach and his team. So start thinking about those questions and comments now, but um, I know we've got Matt here, but if there are any questions from council, I'd be happy to answer them now because I'm sure by the time you get through Matt's exciting report, you're gonna forget all about what you may have had. So any questions for me before I turn things over to uh engineer Watson?
Just a comment, uh, Mayor, that's uh uh, that's very interesting that uh we were eight hundred thousand dollars on our, under our budget on the uh water pollution control center improvements. Uh, congratulations. That's great news.
Great job overall by Kevin Hughes, Matt Watson, and the folks at AECOM, just keeping that project on schedule, if not ahead of schedule and under budget. So uh, great team effort. They've been very successful with it and uh we're always happy, especially when something's three quarters of a million dollars under budget. Okay, well, without further ado, uh, city engineer Matt Watson, the floor is yours.
Perfect. Can everybody see my screen here with my PowerPoint presentation?
Yep, I can.
Perfect. Thank you. So first of all, I appreciate the opportunity to provide the update to city council. And on behalf of the city engineer's office, I want to welcome and congratulate Councilman Perkins uh with his appointment to city council. Uh, so I was looking through our records uh in our office and I actually haven't given an update to city council since the spring of two thousand and nineteen. Um, so we've gotten a lot accomplished over that last year and a half, almost two years. And I'm going to focus the presentation on giving an update, not only on the projects, but also the strides we've made improving the functionality and efficiency of the city engineer's also office as well as kind of give a highlight of some of the programs we're implementing as well as the responsibilities we have in the city engineer's office as there's lots of new council members um since that time that I gave that last update. So I think about half of you are new. Um, so I want to make sure that everybody has a full understanding of of everything that we do have going on in the engineer's office outside of just the projects uh that you do see. Um, so first and foremost, I want to give an update on the staff. Um, so you can't have a successful office unless you have a great staff. And uh, first, uh, I want to update that since I gave the last presentation, I was successful in obtaining both my professional surveying license as well as my certified per uh professionally erosion and sediment control license. Um, so I am now the only P E P S and C P E F C um in Seneca County. Um, our assistant engineer is now Jason Morder. He's an engineer in training and a survey surveyor in training in the state of Ohio. Um, so he has hopes and aspirations of also obtaining both his professional engineering and professional surveying license in the future. Um, he plans to hopefully take his uh professional engineering exam this year. And he started in the office last February, so he is finishing up his first year as the assistant city engineer since taking the place of Brandon Burner, who was our former assistant city engineer and transitioned out to be in the public work superintendent. Last but not least, we got Dan Brickner, who's our zoning inspector. Dan does a great job on the zoning side of things. He's been in that position for four years now this month and like I said, he does a great job with zoning. We also had Ken Crable on our staff in the summer of two thousand and nineteen as a part-time engineer tech. Um, Ken was very valuable to our office. He brought a large knowledge and expertise in the asphalt and paving industry with over thirty years of of paving experience and he was very helpful in developing the street paving program that we're implementing today. So um, Ken was on our staff for that one summer. Uh, we went into twenty twenty and and we wanted to reduce our staff to to save money um for the city during the pandemic. Um, and during that timeframe, we really got a full understanding of, you know, what was needed to develop this staff. I have seven and a half years of experience at the city, but engineering is one of them fields that you you never stop learning and you have to continue to develop yourself as a professional every day. And as I said, we have a young staff under me. We have a one-year city assistant city engineer and a zoning inspector with four years of experience. So combined, their total experience is only five years and doesn't even total my seven and a half years. So as the department head of the office, I'm continuing to try to develop that staff and the best way to develop your staff, especially in assistant engineers, have them at your side so they can watch, listen, observe and learn everything that you're doing so that they can fulfill in your spot in your absence. Um, and in doing that last year, um, I really noticed that we lacked a lot of office coverage. So we have lots of projects going on in the community which takes us outside of the office. And while I'm trying to develop an assistant engineer, there just wasn't anybody in the office on the engineering side to answer the phones or direct calls or whatnot. And you would come back and you might have seven voicemails and and twenty emails sitting there waiting for you and you get back for a half hour and the phone's ringing and you need to go out to another project. So I really decided that the best long-term approach for the office was not to uh continue with a part-time engineer tech as I saw that there would probably be um, lots of overturn um in that position. Um, and what I know the mayor has come before you and made mention that we were proceeding forward with the hiring of an engineer aide. And the engineering aide position, um, we were developed that with three goals in mind. And those goals were to provide clerical and administrative assistance to the office, provide the office coverage when both the city engineer and assistant city engineer might not be in the office as well as kind of try to reduce the hours and create sustainability within both the city engineer and assistant city engineer positions. So as you can see on this slide, I've kind of outlined the duties um that we're looking for um from the, from this engineering aide position. A lot of them are clerical duties. All of these duties are being currently performed primarily by myself or this assistant city engineer. So as we continue to take on a larger workload and volume due to government regulations from the higher-ups or just trying to reduce the amount of consultants to save the city dollars on our projects. And we felt this was a pivotal role for us. So as we moved forward with this hiring process, there was a lot of interest um in this position. We received fifty-one applicants um for this position and I greatly appreciate the support that I got from our human resources director, Deb Reamer as we um siphoned through the fifty-one applications. Last week, Deb and myself interviewed our top seven candidates. And I'm pleased to announce that we have selected an individual um by the name of Dawn Wright to take on this position. Um, Dawn is currently an administrative assistant at Heidelberg University and will begin her duties as the engineering aide on Tuesday, February sixteenth, uh, the day after President's Day. And what we saw in Dawn during the interview process just spoke volumes for the type of person she is. Um, she just through her stories just showed what type of hard work, dedication and sacrifice says that she gives to her family. And those are values that I think that you can't teach. Um, a lot of the duties that we're going to look for in this position, they can be trainable, but to me, when you're looking for a candidate for a position, those are the type of traits that you're really looking for. So we're very excited to to be bringing her on our team. Um, next, as I said, um, as we continue to take on more responsibilities, I kind of wanted to give an update on the non-project service and responsibilities that we have within this office. As I feel that many council members may not know that we have our hands in a lot of these processes. So um, first and foremost, we do have a lot of oversight on all the private utility projects that happen within the community. Everything from Aqua to Columbia Gas to A P, A T and T, Baskin Telephone. And then there's numerous other utility companies that seem to pop up that want to provide their services in the community. So we're working with them hand in hand on their projects to ensure that one, we are coordinating their projects with our projects as well as making sure if they do work in our right of way that upon completion of their work, everything is restored back to its original condition. Second, we assist with a lot of private development projects, both on the large and small scale. So as the mayor said, T-Sep has a lot going on and they've been doing a great job over the past few years and and with the great job that they're doing. Um, we've seen a substantial amount of increase in workload in our office um from the industrial, commercial and residential side. Um, so we do have our hands in a lot of the private development that's being um completed within the city and it takes smart development to have good development. So we're making sure that we're checking everything thoroughly um as it comes through our office. Um, we also provide assistance to public works department. So when we gave a presentation probably about a year and a half ago um with transitioning Brandon Burner from the assistant city engineer role to be in the public work superintendent, one of the main things that we focused on was how that would improve the coordination and collaboration between both the engineering department and the public works department. And I think that's been very successful um since Brandon took over as the public works and superintendent. Uh, Brandon and I meet monthly. Uh, we discuss what the plans are, not only in the engineer's office, but also in the public works department and how we can work together as one uh to have a successful project for the city. And I think it is also very beneficial that Brandon has sat in the engineer's office and he knows what we're taking on in our office when he's doing his decision-making process out at public works. Uh, we also conduct residential and commercial sewer inspections and testing. So we do inspections on any sewer tap that's ran from a house to a sewer main. That is the responsibility of the city of Tiffin. Um, the lateral is the responsibility of the property owner, but we do an inspection to make sure that it was installed per our city specifications as well as to get a record of where where that line is because as ownership changes on a property, someone might have a sewer issue in the future and they're and they don't know where that line is, but we try to maintain those records in this uh city engineer's office to provide that assistance to our our residents within the community. And then anytime a mainline sewer is installed, we do a testing upon the completion of the construction. So we test both the lines and the manholes to make sure that they're watertight and that they were built properly before we take on the maintenance responsibility of that sewer being under the ownership of the city of Tiffin. We do lot split review. So anytime a parcel is subdivided in the city of Tiffin, I review that lot split to make sure that it complies with both our zoning regulations as well as our planning code. Uh, being the city administrator, I'm also the floodplain administrator for the city of Tiffin. As you know, we have the Sandusky River and we have Rock Creek both flowing through our community. Um, with those two bodies of water, we have flood plains, a hundred-year flood plains as well as floodways. So it's my responsibility as the floodplain administrator to make sure that any development within those designated floodways and flood plains are developed in accordance with the regulations and standards of FEMA and the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. Uh, we issue flood sewer tap permits uh for all the sewer tap uh connections that I previously made mention of. Uh, we issue contractor licensing for sewer installation and right-of-way construction. So any contractor that wishes to work within the right-of-way of the city of Tiffin or on a sewer lateral or sewer main in the city of Tiffin is required to submit bonding and insurance uh to our office. So we want to make sure that all the contractors have the requirements prior to working on either of those pieces of infrastructure or in our right-of-way. Um, so for multiple reasons, one, if the project were to go bad and they were to just walk away from the job, we want to make sure that everything within our right-of-way that we're required to maintain is brought back to its original condition and that we have a means of funding in order to do so. Um, the other thing is just so we can make sure that, you know, we know who's working where, that they're a lot reliable contractor and that the work being performed is up to our standards. Um, also, I sit on many T-Sep committees, so I'm a member of the T-Sep Downtown Design Committee. Also sit on the Community Development Committee and and provide assistance to other uh T-Sep committees such as the Economic Development Committee. Member of the Traffic Safety Committee, which meets monthly for the city of Tiffin. Our office serves as the secretary for a lot of the city boards and commissions such as the zoning board of appeals, architectural border review and the planning commission. We have involvement in a lot of the city and county plans, anything from the active transportation plan to the comprehensive plan, transit plan, flood mitigation plan, so forth. And then on a daily basis, we're dealing with a wide variety of public concerns and complaints. As I said, uh, we've made a lot of strides over the last year and a half, improving the functionality and efficiency of the office. Um, I think that improving the functionality and efficiency is very pivotal to provide a high-quality level of service. And, you know, first and foremost, I I think council for their support and increasing the the work hour week for both the city engineer and assistant city engineer position. So uh, about a year and a half ago, I believe, uh, beginning of two thousand and nineteen, both myself and assistant city engineer started working forty-hour, being paid on forty-hour work weeks. Uh, prior to that and still till today, we are working far in excess of forty-hour work weeks. And prior to that, um, we just accumulated a lot of paid time off, which also created issues in regards to the office coverage that I previously expressed. Um, another stride that we made was changing the hours of operation of the city engineer's office. Um, so previously, the city engineer side uh of the engineer's office uh worked eight-thirty to four-thirty shift, uh, just like the building is open to the public. Um, but we we changed that. So what we did was the engineer's office, both myself and the assistant city engineer now report for duty at seven o'clock in the morning. And this aligns well with Public Works, who also starts at seven in the morning as well as many of your construction projects. They're not waiting to start till you get in the office at eight-thirty. So it just aligns ourselves better uh with the actual time that work is being performed that we need to have our hands in. And we did leave the zoning inspector position as at eight-thirty to four-thirty, since that's more of a service-based position for the community. And we felt that the hours of that position needed to maintain the hours of the building. Um, since the last update, we have scanned all the sewer taps that we have on record within our office. So we have created what is called a master records by address filing system where every address that has a record within the city of Tiffin has its own individual file. And what we've done is we we began moving forward with all the scanned documents that we have from the sewer side and the zoning side. Those are recorded into the, or those are filed into the file folder for that specific address. And to date, I can say that we have over ten thousand PDF files scanned into our master records by address. So that's a pretty significant amount of scanning that we've gotten accomplished over the last year and a half. And it's very pivotal and beneficial to improving our functionality and efficiency and providing responses to the public. Another thing that we've gotten accomplished is we've scanned all the minor lot split surveys, annexation plaits and survey monument references that we have on record in our office. So we've scanned over twenty-two hundred surveys um that are on record in our office and we have filed those by street. Um, so this also improves our functionality and efficiency because it assists us with determining right-of-ways very quickly. Um, so um, this is very useful for not only projects determining where the right-of-way is, but we get a lot of calls and concerns in regard to is this tree a public tree or is it a private tree? And in order to determine whether that tree that might be dropping limbs in the road is on private or public property, you have to do a quick analysis in the field of where that right-of-way actually is. And now that we have all these records scanned by street, it is very efficient process as we continue to move forward. We've also scanned all the capable plans that would fit through our um scanner, our large format scanner in the office out of our vault. So we've scanned over one thousand plan sets out of that vault and we have fought and we have um, recorded them in a database through a spreadsheet, Microsoft Excel spreadsheet. So every file in our vault has some sort of designated number attached to it and you can search for those um plans by either name or file within the engineered file index and it'll tell you whether it's scanned. And then we have a folder system called Vault Scans that um any PDF that was scanned um that is sorted appropriately through the vault is accessible that way. So we have over one thousand plans and many of those plans were multiple page sets of plans that are scanned into our database. And and what we've done with that information is um we've really set a system which makes all those records that we have available, available twenty-four seven as a lot of us are working around the clock twenty-four seven. So we created what's called a Google File Share Drive, which is a cloud-based server system through Google. So we have unlimited storage space. Uh, but the difference with that in comparison to a normal Google Drive is is that the Google File Share Drive allows us to use uh, Microsoft Office products like Microsoft Word, Microsoft Excel in lieu of using a a Google Doc. Um, so it fits very well with the systems that we have established in our office. And also with that, we created a separate Google File Share Drive for contractors and consultants. Um, so we've given most of the contractors and consultants that work in our office frequently or need access to our records frequently few rights to this Google File Share Drive. So instead of having to call the office and request certain information, they also have that information readily available to them twenty-four seven, which will ultimately improve our functionality and efficiency um and provide our resources to be used elsewhere. Um, we've also updated and restructured the city engineer's office webpage. So we've gotten all the information as possible updated to that website to hopefully reduce the number of calls and inquiries um to obtain certain information and documents. Um, we implemented a credit card payment. We implemented a credit card payment capabilities within our office. So most of our permits these days are paid by credit card. And previously, the credit card machine was down in the finance department. So we felt it was appropriate to purchase our own credit card portal in our office so that we could transact our permits without the resources of another city department. We've done fee schedule revisions. We brought this to city council probably a year, do a year and a half ago, where we aligned our fee schedule for many of our permits to that of other similar cities around the City of Tiffin. We've done zoning code text and map amendments. So currently, there's the multiple legislations going through city council right now to eliminate the areas on our zoning map that were designated as Clinton Township zoning and also improve the the zoning code through, by eliminating the emissions and discrepancies. So we've made strides improving the the zoning side as well. We've updated the Public Works Design Manual. As you know, the previous design manual dated back to nineteen sixty-seven, which was far out of date. And recently, this past year, we've updated that manual, which is very well-used in these private developments that are happening in the City of Tiffin and set some standards for both the engineer's office and the Public Works Department moving forward. And then finally, we've updated our floodplain permits. So the floodplain permits were very well outdated. ODNR recommended to us that we update our permits. We got a template from them and we've improved the floodplain permitting process by implementing new permits. So all these things were very valuable in increasing the functionality and efficiency of our office so that we can provide our services on a high level and take the office to the next level. And I do acknowledge that a lot of these things could not have been accomplished without the support of the administration and city council. So I greatly appreciate everyone's support and all these items that we've brought before you over the past few years. Moving on to programs, so we do have a lot of programs that we implement and manage outside of the project workload. First and foremost is the recently adopted Stormwater Management Program. So this was the Ohio EPA mandated program that sets requirements for both the construction and post-construction of all developments within the City of Tiffin that disturb one or more acre of land. So this process has put a substantial amount of workload on our office over the last year. Any construction project, like I said, that disturbs more, one or more acre of land has to go through a permitting process with our office prior to breaking ground. And then once that project has broken ground, weekly inspections need to be performed by a certified professional on each project site and those inspections are submitted to our office. Furthermore, if it rains more than a half an inch in a twenty-four-hour period, this also triggers the need for an inspection that is submitted to our office to verify, so that we can verify that all the stormwater pollution prevention plans are being implemented properly in the field. Then on the post-construction side, once the project is complete, our office also enters into inspection and maintenance agreements with all facilities that have a detention basin, bio-retention basin, underground storage system. And then those systems ultimately have to have an annual inspection completed on them by a certified professional that is also submitted and reviewed by our office so that we can ensure that the facilities in the City of Tiffin are being maintained on going into the future. We also are involved with the long-term control plan and the flow monitoring that is being completed as part of the long-term control plan. So as everyone knows, we have the twenty-year-plus long-term control plan, which is ultimately proposing to reduce the amount of sewer overflows into the Sandusky River. And with that, we receive monthly, our monthly inspection reports from the flow monitors in our system that give us an update on the number of overflow events that happened into the river that past month. We've established a culvert inspection program. So once I took over as city engineer, we really didn't have any records in our office of where our roadside culverts were and where they were and at what level they were being maintained or in what condition they were in. So we developed, we researched ODOT's culvert inspection process and between the city engineer's office and the Public Works Department, we are keeping an eye on the ten, now eleven roadside culverts that we have within the City of Tiffin by performing annual inspections. We also oversee the bridge inspection program. So the City of Tiffin has thirteen bridges. The city engineer's office does not do the inspections. The inspections are being performed for free for the City of Tiffin by a consultant through the ODOT Municipal Bridge Inspection Program. But we are ultimately reviewing those inspection reports when they're submitted to the office on an annual basis to verify whether or not there's some maintenance items that can be completed to prolong the lifespan of our thirteen road, our thirteen bridges. We've implemented a paperless bidding process. So prior to taking over as a city engineer, we were relying on consultants to manage a lot of our bidding process. I felt that we could take that on. We have the capabilities within our office. And furthermore, we've went paperless with that process. So we are promoting to send the plans and the bidding documents to all the contractors via email. And to furthermore promote that paperless process, we are charging for any set of paper plans. And if somebody requests a paper set of plans, they need to pick them up directly from our office rather than us FedExing or UPSing those to those specific companies. And I think this has worked quite well. As the mayor said, we did have two recent bid openings. One of those projects, we had more than sixteen plan holders from the project. So I think that this process is ultimately increasing the amount of bidders that we had rather than deterring them away. We've also set up a survey monument preservation program. So we are now restoring and preserving survey monumentation within our roadways in conjunction with our street paving program. So prior to paving a street, our office is doing research at both the county engineer's office as well as in our office to identify any survey monuments that might be within the roadway of a road that we're proposing to pave. Our office then goes out, tries to locate those monuments. We dig them up and we coordinate with Hank and Associates to put a GPS coordinate on that monument prior to that road being paved. And then upon conclusion of the project, some of that survey monumentation might be, get destroyed or removed as a result of the construction of that road resurfacing. So upon conclusion of the project, Hank and Associates can go back out, reset any point that was disturbed. And we are also working with our Public Works Department to install monument boxes on those monuments within our roadway so that they are preserved for many years to come with future paving projects. I think this is a great program that we started. It's, it takes a little bit of extra work, but I think it has a lot of benefits, not only to our office but to our residents. I think the more that we can save and preserve these survey monuments, it's only going to reduce the cost associated with private property surveys that are performed in our community in the future. Furthermore, it makes it easier for our office to determine where those rights-of-way are in the field more quickly. So as I said before, we have all the surveys scanned into our database. Now we can physically go out, see a monument box on the center line of a road, know that that right-of-way might be thirty feet, measure thirty feet over, and we can easily identify where that right-of-way is. Another program that we've moved forward this last year is I felt that there was not enough corporation limit signage at our road boundaries where we have a jurisdictional boundary in the city. So this past fall, I identified that we have sixty-eight jurisdictional boundaries on roadways within our city. I drove all the corporation limit boundaries, identified what signs were existent, which ones were missing. And we are currently working with our Public Works Department as well as ODOT to ensure that there is a enter or leave corp sign at all jurisdictional boundaries on a roadway. And I think that this will be beneficial not only for our department, the residents, but also the safety services such as police and fire to be able to identify quickly in the field what areas are within the city or what areas might be within a neighboring adjacent township. As the mayor said, we've moved forward with four traffic safety studies and we'll be presenting an update in the near future in regards to the results of those studies. We've also began moving forward with an ADA transition plan. So I believe we are non-compliant how we stand right now with the City of Tiffin, being that we have not officially adopted an ADA transition plan. Over the last year, our office has done a self-evaluation of our right-aways. So we have analyzed curb ramps, we've analyzed the sidewalks, and we put together a plan moving forward on how we can become compliant with the ADA standards. The city administrator is currently working to get an analysis done on our facilities. And this year, I would expect that we'll be coming to city council asking for the adoption of an ADA transition plan. And and this is key because a lot of the neighboring states surrounding Ohio have cut off federal funding to cities that do not have ADA transition plans officially adopted. So we're trying to be proactive to get out ahead of this in case Ohio were to ever have the same requirements as the neighboring states and we do not want to put ourselves in jeopardy of having of federal funding. And then finally, we did have some involvement with DORA. We provided assistance with map creation, boundary descriptions and boundary area determinations. As I said, our office does a lot of permits. So I kind of wanted to give an update on the volume of permits that we perform annually, most notably our zoning permits. So as you will see, we transacted two hundred and twenty-three zoning permits in two thousand twenty, which was substantially higher than the one hundred and seventy that we transacted in two thousand nineteen. I think that this was widely due to CARES Act funding and a lot of people working from home, but does go to show that there was people doing projects and investing in our community. And and also, I want to note, you know, we did increase our permits the same year that we increased our fee schedule. So we did bring in additional revenue by doing that that fee schedule analysis the year before. So I think that was, that was very pivotal to the city as well. But we do process a lot of permits from floodplain permits, the sewer tap permits. Zoning, we, and then as I said, we're the Secretary for the Zoning Board of Appeals, Architectural Border Review and Planning Commission. Then moving on to the fun part, the projects. So in two thousand nineteen, we did complete a lot of great projects. We had the Melmore Street Rapid Flashing Beacon Project, the West End Development, Fairway and Progress Parkway, everything around the new Trilogy and Willow's facility. We completed the Sarah Street Project finally with the Congressman Gilmore's Federal Airmark Funding. We had the Market and Perry Street Streetscape Project on State Route Eighteen. We also, that was the first year of our annual street paving project, which incorporated the new road and bridge levy. So that was the first year that we had more, that we spent more than the normal four hundred thousand dollars a year on street resurfacing. And I do want to note that we are trying to do things the right way as we move forward with the street paving program. In two thousand nineteen, we resurfaced Sycamore Street. One of the things that always bothered me there was the turn lane, turning onto Ellis Street. It had the capacity to, for one vehicle. So when we paved Sycamore Street, we widened that turn lane out as much as possible while paving the paving the road. And and that picture off to the right does show that. Two thousand nineteen, we were also involved in, did plans for the Hedgers Boyer Park Resurfacing Project. We also did the Design and Construction Administration for that year, CDBG Project, which was River View Park Improvements. And then we also worked with Public Works to do ten thousand dollars worth of sidewalk improvement, as well as we did a pedestrian signage project to improve the signage at both Heidelberg and Tiffin University. So down there in the note, I won't go through it, but I did want to identify that, you know, all the responsibilities that come with managing a public project at the City of Tiffin. So it isn't just, you know, the projects just don't build themselves. There's a lot of work that has to be done from start to finish and a lot of those items are laid out there. And ultimately, our objective with these projects is to reduce the amount of money that we spend with consultants. And most of, most of these projects here, we did do most of the work ourselves. But sometimes it does make more sense to use a consultant. We use consultants on the Sarah Street Project and the State Route Eighteen Project for the inspection. And the reason for that was is because the grant funding helped pay for those consultants. So a lot of times we're seeing a hundred dollars to two hundred dollars an hour for the use of a consultant. And I just don't think that is feasible or makes a lot of sense with our taxpayer dollars. So that's why we are trying to do as much in-house as possible. But when you have a grant source like the Market and Perry Street Streetscape Project that pays for eighty percent of that consultant's cost, then you're now looking at something like twenty to forty dollars an hour for that consultant services. And it just makes more sense to use our resources elsewhere and to utilize that consultant. So here's some pictures from some of the two thousand nineteen projects. I think everything that we did was on a high-level service and turned out great and was a great asset to the City of Tiffin. But the main thing I want to focus on here is I identified the projects based upon local funding and grant funding. And as you can see, in two thousand nineteen, we did almost, we did just over five-point-seven million dollars in improvements in the City of Tiffin, which just over three million of it was locally funded. So, so I think that is a key point to showing that we are being proactive, leveraging as many local funds as possible with our local state and federal funding sources. And we're getting a bang for our buck here at the City of Tiffin. Moving on to twenty twenty projects. So this past year, we completed the Miami Street Reconstruction Project near Tiffin University. We put a new bridge deck on the Ellis Street Canal Bridge because that would not allow, had a weight restriction and fire trucks, school buses, snowplows could not drive over that bridge and meet the the weight restriction. We had a annual street resurfacing project in which we also converted South River Road from a through road to installing a cul-de-sac and transitioning the north part of that road to a trail. We also had collaboration projects with both Hopewell Township and Clinton Township as they've moved forward with resurfacing roadways that were both in their jurisdiction and ours. We had the OPWC Street Resurfacing Project, which resurfaced parts of North Washington and West Perry Streets. We had the Jefferson Street Streetscape Project, which we took that one on in the city engineer's office from start to finish with a tight deadline as that funding was starting to slip away. And then finally, we did the ODOT Signal Timing Project, which improved traffic flow on both West Market Street and South Washington Street corridors. Again, I want to highlight twenty twenty in regards to funding. So we did just under three million dollars worth of projects last year that were completed, of which almost one point, one point four million was locally funded. So more than fifty percent of the funds spent on our infrastructure projects last year come from a grant source. So we are being very fiscally responsible with our funding here at the City of Tiffin. Twenty twenty-one's not going to be a let-up. So this year, we're going to have nine projects at some point under construction within the City of Tiffin. As Brent May had mentioned, the East Market and East Perry Street Railroad Safety Improvement Project's getting ready to start this spring. This project will reduce the amount of queuing back to the railroad tracks due to the traffic signal at the intersection of Market and Perry near the pit stop and Heidelberg University. We're going to move forward with putting, installing curb around the quad gates that were recently installed as part of the Railroad Safety Project at the four crossings that are still operating within the City of Tiffin. That project should start here with as soon as weather breaks in March and April as well. We're moving forward with the Sean Avenue Reconstruction Project, which we're going to be rebuilding and widening Sean Avenue south of Tyber Road in between American Fine Center and TH Plastics. This project bid Friday. I had an engineer's estimate of two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We had ten bidders come to the table and the lowest bid come in just above a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. So the bids came in over ninety thousand dollars less than the engineer's estimate. So we're going to see a substantial amount of savings on that project as we do have two identical, identified grant sources. So we're going to get that road rebuilt with very minimal local dollars. We have the twenty twenty-one pavement repair program. We bid that project on Friday. I had an engineer's estimate of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. M and B asphalt was the lowest bidder again. Their bid come in about four hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, so nearly fifty thousand dollars below the engineer's estimate. So with that, I am going to advise to the Board of Control. When we award that contract, you see the street paving list off to the right of all the roads that we're proposing to pave in the City of Tiffin. I'm also going to propose that we add Birchwood Drive, Third Avenue and Thomas Street to that list to get completed this year. We're also going to have the twenty twenty-one OPWC Pavement Repair Program as soon as the funding is finalized at the state level. So we have been told that we were in the group of cities that were selected for funding for this year's OPWC funding. This project is proposing to resurface Hudson Street along with many of the roads in that surrounding area. We are also collaborating with ODOT on a twenty twenty-one urban paving project, which has an estimated cost of five hundred thousand dollars within the City of Tiffin, which three hundred thousand of which will more than likely be paid with federal funds administered by ODOT. This will resurface Melmore Street from a solidly corporation limits to- This will resurface Melmore Street from a solidly corporation limits to Hedger Street. South Washington Street in our downtown from Saint Joe's Church to Riverside Drive. As well as State Route fifty-three from Ella Street to Cottage Avenue. Will be finalizing the wastewater treatment plant project this year as the mayor previously updated council. We are doing plans and overseeing this year's CDBG project, which is proposing to do park improvements at Nature Trails Park. And then finally, upon the completion of the twenty twenty-one urban paving project, which I said will resurface South Washington Street in our downtown. We are also moving forward with a stamped concrete crosswalk project, which will have decorative brick crosswalks at many of our key crosswalks within the downtown. As far as the design side in twenty twenty-one, this year, we're still, we're moving forward with the Ella Street River Bridge Replacement Project Design. So that started last year, continues through this year and will finalize those plans as early as next year. So this is that four point four million dollar estimated cost project, which we've already received two million dollars in federal funding from ODOT Municipal Bridge Program. Construction of the bridge is scheduled to begin as early as the fall of twenty twenty-two. And will be complete by the time the school starts in August of twenty twenty-three. We are expecting the road closure to be no more than six months. But we just don't know when that six months is going to be. We are currently working with ODOT and many variable. Regulatory agencies determining what channel restrictions we have in the Sandusky River and when we can work in at certain times of the year. We're also going to be moving forward this year with the design of our East Perry Street Reconstruction Project. So as council knows, we received ninety-five percent federal funding. From ODOT Small City Program towards this one point one two five million dollar road reconstruction project. Which will reconstruct East Perry Street between Heidelberg University and Jefferson Street. This project is anticipated to start construction as early as fall of twenty twenty-three. This year, we're also going to start the design of our next project within our long-term control plan, which is the CSO Basin twenty-four and thirty inflow reduction project. Three to four years ago now, a part of the Rock Creek Wall, just east of Circular Street. Near Heidelberg University collapsed into Rock Creek. We're going to move forward this year with figuring out the design to transition that creek wall into a natural stream bank. And then finally, we'll be working on next year's street paving project and all the associated survey. Point preservation project that goes with that twenty twenty-two annual street resurfacing list. Will also be managing most of the same implementation projects that I had previously mentioned. In addition to those, we are working on the CSO seventeen dye testing. So. CSO seventeen had project take place on it back in two thousand nine. Our consultants kind of failed us on that project and we still have cross connections in our storm sewer. So we are working. Between the wastewater treatment plant, the engineers' office staff and the public work super, uh, public work staff to. Move forward, doing some dye testing to try to figure out where these cross connections are coming from in that sewer district area. And then also the city administrators taking the lead to to move forward with the Quiet Zone application. And will provide whatever assistance is needed from our office to take that to the finish line. In twenty twenty-one, we're also going to submit a grant application to the Ohio Public Works Commission for the Ella Street River Bridge. Which I said is supposed to begin construction as early as fall of twenty twenty-two. So we're going to put in a grant application for a maximum amount of five hundred thousand dollars to further leverage. The grant dollars that would be associated to that project and also ensure that that project is going to be. A hundred percent entirely funded between grants and local dollars due to the road and bridge levy. And that we won't be taking any loans out on that project in the future. Planning is a key to appraisal rating of four or less. And most of the time, that federal funding will pay for eighty percent of that bridge's replacement. So we're sitting in pretty good shape. We're going to continue to maintain our bridges to make sure that we're getting the longevity out of them. But we're not going to devote too many resources to those bridges until they're a four or less and we can make sure that we get that eighty percent funding. And we are doing, being fiscally responsible with our local dollars. We also develop a five-year plan and maintain a five-year plan in the engineer's office. So. Got the detailed plan there on the left, other potential projects that could fall when that plan at some point on the right. Most of those projects in the right were developed to the, were sent to the Community Development Committee, the Dream Big Initiative. To get public input. Also, you will see there that we have an annual sidewalk repair program. We've kind of gotten away from that and the ADA Transition Plan that we're going to bring to City Council ultimately promotes that we need to move forward. With the annual sidewalk repair program like we had been previously doing. So I have some thoughts in mind. I'm thinking as early as twenty twenty-three. We'll probably start that project. There's a lot of administrative work tied to that project. And I want to make sure that I have my engineering aide as well as my assistant city engineer onboard trained down so that they can manage that project. And I can devote my resources more extensively to a lot of the projects on the left that are already laid out there. Another item I want to note is we don't have the sewer projects factored into that five-year plan at this time. We are having communications internally at the city as well with our consultant ACOM. And getting a more updated schedule on our long-term control plan. And as once we get that long-term control plan updated schedule, we will add those projects into that five-year plan. Furthermore, the long-term control plan right now as it stands is just basically getting the EPA off our back. And reducing the number of overflow events into the Sandusky River, but is not tackling the maintenance needs of our collection system or sewer system. That might not be getting addressed as part of the long-term control plan. So we're also having internal conversations amongst ourselves. At the city and the city administration level on developing a maintenance plan. To address the collection system that's not going to be addressed as part of the long-term control plan and get out there and solve some of the sewer issues that we have out there that impact our residents. Also, we do analyze when developing this five-year plan. I do maintain Microsoft Excel files. That analyze the the monthly revenue and expenses of all the funds such as the Street Maintenance Fund, Fund two eleven. State Highway Fund two thirteen and the Road and Bridge Levy Fund two fifteen. So we're analyzing them down to, down to the month. As far as expenses and revenues go, and we're using that data to establish our five-year plan. Because you can't just say we're going to spend a million dollars in January when the revenue might not, when the million dollars might not be there till August. So we are developing that plan on a monthly basis all the way out into that five-year to ten-year timeframe. And I know at the last meeting, Councilman Jones did make mention that there was six hundred thousand dollars unencumbered balance in Fund two eleven. And and we do know that and we do analyze that and and the next monthly financial report, you'll see that that'll be substantially less. Because we did just open a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar encumbrance towards that line for the Railroad Safety Improvement Project this year. And we're trying to keep a little bit of buffer in that as well as a potential emergency fund if something were to go awry. On the Ella Street River Bridge Project because we are ultimately ensuring that we are going to pay for that bridge a hundred percent locally. And finally, I'll leave you with goals. So a successful office ultimately have goals. So when I've made the presentation to City Council in two thousand nineteen, these are the goals that I set before ourselves. And I think as you read down through them, I think I covered a lot of that in the presentation tonight. And I think we've achieved a lot of those goals in two years. The only one that I really haven't been able to mark off the list yet. Is digitizing the sewer maps and we're having further discussion with that amongst the City Engineers Office and Public Works Department. So with that, I'm going to leave it with updated goals for twenty twenty-one. At the tops, the digitized sewer maps. Another item that I want to focus on is continuing to modern and improve the traffic flow within the City of Tiffin. Ultimately, I want to develop a connected trail system for the city's active transportation plan. The city invested funding in that active transportation plan and I want to help take that to the level of implementation. I want to finalize that CSO seventeen project that's been lingering out there for twelve years. It's time to get that one off the books. So we're going to devote resources to getting that complete. The last item that needs to be scanned in this office is the zoning permits. With the addition of that engineering aide, she's going to assist with scanning on a daily basis. And I'm very hopeful that we can get all the zoning permits scanned in the next year or two. I want to improve project-based public relations through social media. So you'll be seeing that potentially as early as this construction season with the addition of that engineering aide. We are going to get more transparent information on a daily basis out to the public on where these projects stand and where there might be traffic impacts through. Through social media. And then finally, as I said, we need to develop our staff to promote sustainability while also providing a high level of service. So we have a young staff. We've had a lot of turnover and we're going to continue to develop that staff to put the city in a good place moving forward. As expectations are high, expectations are high in this office. We set our own expectations. Council and administration has their own expectations. TSEP and regional planning have their own. The residents and building owners put expectations on us as well as developers. And we're going to continue to balance quantity versus quality and provide a high level of service to the City of Tiffin. So. I'll open that up for questions, comments. Sorry, it took a long time. It's probably, I think last meeting you guys said that. That was the all-time record for the mayor's report. Hopefully I didn't set a new record this week, but there's lots going on in the office. And we had a lot to discuss.
Well, Matt, I just want to thank you for putting together that report and all of its thoroughness. There's no question, I, I do not know a single person who has anything negative to say about you and your office. You do a tremendous job for the city, the residents and our businesses. And I'm going to say, before you got on the call and we were still, before we went live. There were several of us already on the call and every one of us agreed that you're the best engineer the city's ever had. And I mean that wholeheartedly. You're a rock star for us. So thank you for everything that you do and continue to do for the City of Tiffin. If if folks only knew. How awesome you were, the job that you do. So thank you, Matt. With that, Mr. President, we'll turn things back over to you. And if there are questions or comments from Matt or myself, we're happy to answer them.
Yeah, don't go away, Matt. Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. Questions for Matt? I remember the, when the Liberty Street project was done, what's? What kind of concerns do we have now and what what really failed us was that the contractors?
I I think it was more on the consultant level. So what we're seeing is we're seeing sanitary flow still in our storm sewer. So those projects that happened on the east end of town, East Perry Street, East Market Street, as well as Greenfield Street. All flow into Liberty Street. And what we are seeing through. Visual inspection is as we're seeing sanitary flow in the storm sewer. And what those projects did was they installed a new sanitary sewer and converted the former combined sewer into a storm sewer. So all sanitary flow should have been out of that combined sewer that was going to be converted over to a storm sewer. So what we haven't been able to do is fully separate all that flow that we invested that money in on the east end of town. Down at Liberty Street and ultimately outlet that former combined sewer as a storm sewer into the river. Knowing that we have sanitary flow still in that line, we can't let that outlet. A hundred percent into the river. So it's still acting as essentially a CSO and only overflows when the. The the line does not meet the capacity of the event. So we've seen areas up around East Market and East Perry where they all flow into the intersection of Perry and Circular Street. We've had visual inspection of paper and sanitary sewage. So we're going to be going in properties in those areas, dye testing the houses out. And ensuring that all the sanitary lines are going into the sanitary sewer and try to identify where those. Cross connections are coming from.
Are we going to see another rebuild of Liberty Street?
No, we're ultimately looking at all the sewer infrastructure for the main parts there. We're just trying to identify. The point sources from the residential standpoint. So we might have to just replumb a house on the inside. Or might have to rerun a lateral at a few specific properties, but we're not talking about a full rebuild of the whole sewer system. We're just trying to determine where those centralized few points of contamination are happening within our, our storm sewer.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
No problem.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had four items I was going to bring up and before everyone says, ooh, ah, but these are easy ones. And I heard you say before, Mr. Watson. Someone who didn't know, I don't think, knew what they're, lives in the South End, said they get water, et cetera, et cetera. Was concerned if and when the riverfront development project goes through, all those toilets being flushed. He was concerned that the wastewater pretreatment couldn't handle that and. I know you've mentioned this before, that's taken care of in this long-term project, correct?
So ultimately, as I said, good development is overseen by the City Engineers Office. And we want to promote good development. So every time there's a development in the city. We do have to analyze the capacity of this, of the sewer system that those developments will be flowing into. We did recently have the downtown sewer project, which happened three or four years ago. Which installed new lines down Monroe Street all the way up to the river crossing, just east of Washington Street near. Jefferson Street on. So that system has been upsized. And then ultimately, the plan with the long-term control plan is to increase the size of the line that goes from the river north to the plant. So yes, from the downtown north to the plant, we are increasing the capacity. And that should not create any issues within the downtown.
Okay, then an easy one. You said ODOT helps out on bridge inspect inspections. They do all thirteen of them for free. Why would they do that for free?
It's just a a service that they provide to all the municipalities. As many municipalities. Might not have the staffing or the expertise within them to do their own inspections.
Okay, and then Dawn's coming on board. Is she a grant writer? Because some like, I don't know whether you do the grant writing or who, but someone does an excellent job. So is she going to take over those duties?
No, I'll continue to do the grants at the City of Tiffin.
Okay, and then item four, and this is it. You mentioned you do a credit card thing. Do you charge, use a credit card or is that?
Yeah, so we we implement the same system that, the policy that the city has. The city has a policy of three dollar and fifty cent. Transaction fee for a credit card and we implement that within our office.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? I have a couple of comments, Matt. First of all, I had said in the committee, the whole meeting that. I've I've worked with every engineer in one way or another since, since nineteen seventy. Actually, it was the late sixties. So I've worked with all the engineers, city engineers since the late sixties until present time with you. And without a doubt, you're the best engineer we've ever had. I pray to God we keep you. The upgrades that you've made in the, in the office and the amount and volume of work that you guys handle. Is just extraordinary compared to what we used to do. So my hat's off to you and your staff. You do a great job. I know you're very user-friendly. You try to solve problems, you try to help people out, and I think that's really important, especially in your position. But it's also important that people understand that, you know, city government is trying to solve problems and is trying to. Make things better for people. So. Last comment I want to make, there's been some discussion on, on city council, why we suspend the three reading rules when we have some. We bid some of these jobs. And I think if people were paying attention tonight, they saw that we saved a lot of money, which we said we, we had the potential to do. By bidding these jobs this time of year, bidding them early. So. I just think that helps to reinforce that suspending these things is a good idea. And contractors at this time of year, as you know, are very hungry for work. They're trying to get things lined up for the spring. They're more, they're more aggressive and you're going to get much better prices out of them. So. Anyway, I want to thank you for, for your report. And I don't know if you set a record or not, but it was very informative. So want to thank you. Does anybody else have a question for Matt? Councilman Gilling.
Thank you, Mr. President. Matt, just a quick question. Do you require oxygen? Cause I don't know if you took a breath that entire time. And the quality and the way you present your material is, is, is almost astounding. I almost would like you to begin training for, I don't know, Jeopardy or or something. But your recall of information and your way to make it user-friendly, you know, speaking as a, as an educator is, is pretty wonderful. And for the public that's watching, I also need you to know that if you send a question to Matt, you get back the most detailed. But still, easy to follow. you get back the most detailed, but still easy to follow response, and it's almost immediate. So just, you know, we've, we've got a gem here and I know many have said the same thing tonight, but just wanted to throw in my two cents, wondering if you were also bit by like a radioactive spider at some point? Because how did, how do you get all this done in a quote-unquote eight-hour workday? It's, it's uncanny.
I appreciate it, it's all about that functionality and efficiency and developing that staff. So we have a great staff, we got a great team and we're all dedicated.
All right, we don't let him get the big head, we got to keep him working. Anybody else have any questions for Matt or the mayor? Okay, thanks, Matt, thank you, thanks, Mayor.
Yep, thank you so much, Matt, we really appreciate it. Some of our department heads were watching this this evening and they've, they've messaged me in the middle of the meeting that you need to go last the next time, you've set the bar so high. I, I think they may be calling in sick for their next, for their next presentation. You've set a very high bar, Matt, but you're, you are immensely appreciated by, by all of us here and, and our residents in the community. Thank you for your time this evening.
Is that the end of your report, Mayor?
Sure is.
Okay. Thank you, moving on with our officers' reports, Clerk of Council Anne Forrest.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Director of Finance Kathy Kaufman.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Director of Law Brent T. Howard.
Yes, just one item, I wanted to inform council that the Zeiss annexation transcript, you approved that and that was recorded at the recorder's office and filed at the other public offices that are required. So that is complete, that's the annexation of the property on Euclid Avenue. So the final step was taken, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Moving ahead with written communications.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Mayor's request for legislation number F, number 21-1, appointment to Civil Service Commission of Jeff Rhodes.
Mayor's request for legislation 21-1 will be referred to the Personnel Labor Relations Committee.
Also, Mayor's request for legislation number 21-2, reappointment to the Tree Commission of Robert Sigler.
Mayor's request for legislation 21-2 will be referred to the Personnel Labor Relations Committee.
And then from the Finance Director, I have a letter giving the list of unclaimed funds that are over one-year-old and need to be written off, the total is $433.05.
The Finance Director's request for unclaimed funds will be referred to the Finance Committee.
Also, I have a letter from the Seneca County Republican Central Committee, signed by Chris Wimmin, the chairman, advising of our, of the appointment of Zachary Perkins as the new Councilman-at-Large, replacing Tyler Schaft.
Again, congratulations, Zach, and this letter will be held on file in the clerk's office.
We also have a letter from the Planning Commission recommending passage. They voted unanimously unanimously to recommend that City Council approve ordinance 20-137.
The Planning Letter, Planning Commission's letter of recommendation will be held on file in the clerk's office.
And then we have notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for the transfer of a liquor permit from Max Convenience Stores doing business at Circle K from their old location at 806 West Market to their new location at 975 West Market.
This request will be referred to the Street Sidewalk and Sewer Committee.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Councilman Leopard.
Mr. President?
Councilman Leopard.
Our committee conferred earlier this, thank you, our committee conferred earlier this evening and we are prepared to authorize the Clerk of City Council to sign and return the document and we do not request a hearing.
Okay.
Noted, thank you. And then I have a letter of appreciation from Mayor Monz to Robert Sigler for his five years of service on the Civil Service Commission.
This letter of appreciation will be held in the clerk's office, on file. We're now under, is, that it?
That's all, thank you.
We're now under Oral Communications, anyone from the attending public who wishes to address council, please, there's a, there's a button that you can hit and the mayor will bring you into our meeting.
Hey, if there are any members on the participant room on Zoom who would like to speak to City Council, please click the button. In most cases, it will be at the bottom of your screen, it says raise hand, and we can bring you in now. All right, Mr. President, there is a hand up, the name is, I believe Caitlin Logan, if the name is correct. So I am going to bring, bring Ms. Logan in. All right, Caitlin, you are in the room, you will have to unmute yourself though to speak, you don't have to have your camera on. But I believe, Anne, what do you need for record, do you just need name, is that all you need?
Her address as well would be helpful, please.
My address is 122 Park Avenue.
Thank you.
Hi, I was just, this is my first meeting, I just wanted to check, where would I get the information that's going to be for the next meeting that I attend, so I'm prepared next time?
Several different sources, we posted on the city website, as well as it is in the newspaper and it is also on social media, on Facebook.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak to council, please use the raise hand button? Welcome, Mr. President, I do not see any additional hands at this time, so I think you're good to go.
All right, thanks, Mayor. We'll move on to motions. Councilman Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we remove ordinance 20-137 from the table.
We have a motion to remove ordinance 20-137 from the table, is there a second? Councilwoman Boyle.
Yeah, I'll second that, Mr. President.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote, please, on the, to remove it from the table.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
And Perkins.
Yes.
Ordinance 20-137 is removed from the table by a vote of seven to zero. For the, Councilwoman Boyle.
Yep, thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend ordinance 20-131 by substituting Exhibit A and replace the exhibit that was originally presented.
Okay, we have a motion to substitute new Exhibit A for ordinance 20-131, is there a second? Councilman Perry.
Yeah, I'll second, Mr. President.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the substitution, please.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
And Perkins.
Yes.
The motion passes, the substitution passes with a vote of seven to zero. Are there any other motions? We're on, we're now under resolutions.
Resolution number 21-3, introduced by Bridgette Boyle. Resolution authorizing the sale during calendar year 2021 of municipally-owned personal property, which is not needed for public use or which is obsolete or unfit for the use for which it was acquired by internet auction pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 721.15D and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of Resolution 21-3. Councilwoman Boyle.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to ask for council's passage of Resolution 21-3.
We have a motion for passage of Resolution 21-3, is there a second? Councilman Gilling.
I'd like to second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing, seeing none, this has an emergency, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the emergency, please.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
And Perkins.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero, we'll now vote on the passage.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
And Perkins.
Yes.
Resolution 21-3 passes with a vote of seven to zero. We're now under ordinances.
Ordinance number 20-130, introduced by Bridgette Boyle. Ordinance zoning approximately 6.33 acres of land owned by Hedges Gate Condominiums Association in the fourth ward of the city as zone R4 multiple-family residential district compatible with adjacent land use and meeting requirements of Tiffin City Charter and the codified ordinances.
This is the third reading of ordinance 20-130. Councilwoman Boyle.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to ask for council's passage of ordinance 20-130.
We have a motion to pass ordinance 20-130, is there a second? Councilwoman Yanatuno.
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Councilman Leopard.
No. Did you see my hand come up?
Yes, I called on you.
Okay, there's pretty good delay in here, on my, my connection. I'm okay.
You don't have a comment?
No.
Okay. Anyone else? I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage, please.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
And Perkins.
Yes.
Ordinance 20-130 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Amended ordinance number 20-131, introduced by Bridgette Boyle. Ordinance zoning approximately 5.352 acres of land owned by the Fox Revival Living Trust dated December 9th, 2008, Russell J. Fox and Beverly K. Fox Grantors and Russell J. Fox and/or Beverly K. Fox trustees in the first ward of the city of Tiffin as zone M-2 heavy industrial district compatible with adjacent land use and meeting requirements of Tiffin City Charter and the codified ordinances.
This is the third reading of ordinance 20-131. Councilwoman Boyle.
Thank you, Mr. President, I would like to ask for council's passage of the amended ordinance 20-131.
We have a motion to pass amended ordinance 20-131, is there a second? Councilman Perry.
Yeah, I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage, please.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
And Perkins.
Yes.
Ordinance 20-131 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance 20-137, introduced by Daniel Perry. Ordinance amending Part 11 Planning and Zoning Code of Tiffin Codified Ordnances to provide clarity and remove inconsistencies in the zoning code.
This is the second reading of ordinance 20-137.
One second, please. Ordinance number 21-9, introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance authorizing all actions necessary to accept a Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, NOPEC, energized community grant and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-19, or 20-9. Councilman Gilling.
Thank you, Mr. President, I would like to ask for suspension of council's three-reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 21-9.
We have a motion to suspend council's three-reading rule and immediate suspension. Is there, is there a second, please? Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes, I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President, so this is a pretty neat program that NOPEC offers. We are getting a grant of, and Mr. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe $33,749 that is a reimbursable grant, so once we get our receipts and invoices and everything else, we'll be able to apply for the reimbursement. This just authorizes council to more or less accept the grant, kind of a no-brainer.
Very good, Councilman Perkins.
Is this a yearly grant, a one-time grant, does anybody know?
It's a one-time.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead, Mayor.
Yes, it's actually both, so there's a new grant available each year as long as NOPEC renews the grant each year. So it's subject to change every year depending on how the organization is doing and how many accounts the city has with NOPEC.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, for the public's benefit, these $33,000 and changes earmarked for what project?
If I may.
I'll defer to.
Mayor Monz.
I'll defer to City Minister Thordner, Mayor Monz.
Yes, Councilman Jones, we're going to resurface the roof of the fire department as well as the upper roof of City Hall. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on suspension, please.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
And Perkins.
Yes.
These suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero, we'll now vote on the emergency.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
And Perkins.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero, we'll now vote on the passage.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Boyle. Councilwoman Boyle. There's a connection problem, Councilwoman Boyle.
I'm wondering if she's having a connection issue with the snow.
Yes, I'm sorry, I am. Yes, I'm sorry. I am having connection issues. Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
And Perkins?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-one dash nine passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash ten, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept an easement and take all other actions necessary wire real property rights from Heidelberg University to construct improvements to East Market and East Perry Streets for the Railroad Safety Improvement Project and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty-one dash ten.
Mr. President?
Councilman Leopard, yes.
I would ask for suspension of city council's three reading rule and passage of ordinance number twenty-one dash ten.
Thank you. We have a motion to suspend council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance twenty-one dash ten. Is there a second? Councilman Gillig.
I'd like to second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President? Mr. President?
Councilman Leopard.
Thank you. The past, the city will receive a permanent easement. This ordinance will grant the city what it needs and does not disturb the description of the planted streets. This will also be a cost savings for Heidelberg in our concern. This traffic safety quiet program has been in discussion for eighteen years. Let's keep it moving.
Very good. Anyone else? All right, we'll move ahead with the vote on the suspension.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
And Perkins?
Yes.
These suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the emergency.
Councilman Perry. Councilman Perry?
Yes.
Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard? And Perkins?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-one dash ten passes with a vote of seven to zero. Forgive me.
Okay. Ordinance number twenty-one dash eleven, introduced by Ben Gillig. I meant, ordinance amending the annual ordinance appropriating certain sums from all city funds for current and other expenditures of the city of Tiffin for fiscal year beginning January one, two thousand twenty-one and extending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty-one dash eleven. Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask for council's suspension of our three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance twenty-one dash eleven, please.
We have a motion to suspend council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance twenty-one dash eleven. Is there a second? Councilman Perkins.
I'd like to second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Gillig.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So we have relatively new software here in the city and what it had done with our twenty twenty-one budget is rounded up a few items which is not permitted by state law. We have to have an exact dollar amount. Finance Director Kaufman caught it and this is just the amended version.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the suspension, please.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Boyle?
She sent me a message that she's joining from her phone here.
Oh, okay.
Listen up here.
She's, did you see her hand?
I don't.
Okay, what's your vote, Bridgette?
Yes.
Well, there she is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
And Perkins?
Yes.
These suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the emergency.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
And Perkins?
Yes.
The emergency passer with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilman Perry.
Yes.
Boyle?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
And Perkins?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-one dash eleven passes with a vote of seven to zero. Is that it?
That concludes the ordinances, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. That that concludes our agenda. Does anybody have anything for the good of the order? Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just an idea that that I thought might be neat and it'd be something I would absolutely love to help with. We have our city website and it has, you know, links to some information about Mayor Montz and City Administrator Thornton, City Engineer Watson. I would love to help kind of create something like that for the council members. You know, whether that be brief biographies, think it'd be very important to put what committees we sit on, what committees we chair. And I know, I believe Nick Dutrow over at TSEP is helping with the website. I'd be more than happy to work with Nick on that, but I just think it'd be, you know, something good for for our friends and neighbors to look up some information about their elected representatives.
Okay, Mayor Montz.
Yeah, I'm sure Ben or Ben, Nick's not listening, but I'll be sure to pass that along to him because it's kind of funny. You mentioned that. I actually just asked him last week if he would begin working on something like that. I would like to get pictures of all of you on there as well, so that residents can put a name with the face when they they see you out and about if you're willing to. So I asked him to do that last week. I told him, you know, time is not of the essence or anything, but yeah, so I'm sure he would love to have your penmanship to put something like that together and any assistance you can give him. I'm sure he'd appreciate it. So that the the city council page is you all, so whatever you'd like to see on there, we'd be more than happy to to include it.
Just know, in my case, the camera tends to add about a hundred and fifty pounds.
And we need to wear a collared shirt, correct? Is that worth talking about?
We have to put a picture with it.
Whatever you want to wear.
Yeah.
Appropriate, though, Ken. We know how you.
Well, thanks. Thanks, Councilman Gillig. That's a that's a good idea and very appreciated. Does anyone else have anything? All right, Councilman Jones, briefly.
I just want to thank Councilman Leopard and Gillig for explaining the first reading on twenty-one nine, twenty-one ten, twenty-one eleven. I know eight people are listening in. I think we're educating the public by doing that. Thank you both.
Thank you. Councilman Perry.
Very briefly, I've gotten this question three times in the last two weeks, asking about the skating rink and where that stands. So I didn't know if we had an update on that.
Mayor or?
I have nothing, but that would be a great question to pose to the TSEP team. Since they're giving their presentation in two weeks to you all on the sixteenth. I know at least he was, David Zach was out there listening. I don't know if he is anymore, but the last I had heard and it was some time ago that there was some litigation flying over leakage issues out there with with one of the pipes that had burst and I have not heard an update in quite some time, but David and his team can give you that in two weeks if you'd like.
Anyone else? All right. Well, God bless you all. I call this meeting adjourned. Good night.